I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the regular county commission meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. It's 8:30 a.m., so we'll commence with business. First item on agenda, is there any public input on the approved agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, there is one change to the agenda. I recommend a under regular business number four be moved to the August 13th meeting.
Okay, item number four.
With that change, I would offer a motion to approve.
A second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second by Poppins and Landine. Is there any discussion? Any public input? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Now, do we have a motion for action to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Landine, or excuse me, motion by Landine, second by Schmidt. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Oh, you want to get public input on that?
On the consent agenda, Jimmy.
Was this the consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Yep, is there any public input on it?
Is there any public input on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, go ahead, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. All right, moving on to our regular business. We'll begin with item number one. Alicia, will you read that, please?
Public hearing held as advertised to consider an application for a temporary on sale liquor license to operate outside the municipality for the Good Earth Farm and Animal Sanctuary for an event to occur on August 7th, 2024, and August 17th, 2024, located at the Good Earth Farm, 28318-466th Avenue, Lenox, South Dakota, 57039, Kroger's addition, tract 2C Northwest and a Quarter, 289851.
I know that the applicant is here. If there's any questions, is there any questions for the applicant? Is there any public input? If not, I guess I'll entertain a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Wish you well. Open house, yeah. Lot of work.
Yes.
Has that always been part of the animal sanctuary? Is that a change?
Go ahead and come up to the mic if you would, Nancy, so everyone can hear. State your name and address, too, please.
Yes, Nancy Kirstein, the Good Earth Farm, Lenox, South Dakota, 28318-466th Avenue. The farm has always been a kind of an animal sanctuary since we've been there for 13 years. Two years ago, it became its own nonprofit charitable organization. So it's just another entity that lives within our property. So we've had a rash of animal illness lately, so this is very timely.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to item number two. Sherry? I guess it's Drew. Okay, Drew.
Morning, Commissioners. The auditor asked me to present on these two, next two items. The first item, asking the same board action. The first one's a reconveyance by quitclaim deed to the original owner of a tax deed parcel. They have become current with their taxes. They paid up $15,567.22. This would then put the ownership back in their name.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there public input at this time?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm on the phone now.
Okay, thank you. Any public input on item number two? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion amongst the commission? All right, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three, again, Drew.
Again, Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. This is seeking board action reconveyance of a tax deed parcel by quitclaim deed. They have become current in their taxes, paying $16,600. Recommend board approval of reconveyance.
Okay, is there any public input on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Schmidt. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, item number five. Again, we're looking for board action. And Mr. Swenson, our sheriff, is here.
Good morning, Steve Swenson, Lake County Sheriff. I'm just asking for board approval. And speaking with the auditor, she preferred that we use the insurance check that we'll be receiving for the car that was flooded out, the amount of $50,649, to purchase a vehicle this year. Carl Chevrolet does have a Tahoe for $51,775. And then we would remove one vehicle out of next year's budget using the insurance money that we're getting this year for that vehicle.
So it's pretty much a wash, isn't it?
Excuse me, it's not actually a wash because the vehicle and the equipment, the equipment's about $30,000. So we're going to need a supplement of $30,000 for equipment. Again, that would be for this year because that's unbudgeted. That's equipment and installation. And then we'd reduce our budget for next year by $65,000. And the reason we need more this year than the reduction next year is when we transfer a vehicle out of fleet next year, that equipment that's in that vehicle will be able to put in the new vehicle. The equipment, the vehicle that got flooded was all destroyed.
Was there any insurance coverage for that, for the equipment?
And these aren't going to be exact numbers, but the vehicle, we would receive $28,000 for the vehicle, and $22,000 was for the equipment.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
I guess, is there any public input on this matter? If not, is there any questions for the sheriff? I guess I'll entertain a motion then. Move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Schmidt, second by Landine. Is there any discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, item number six, Mr. DeGroot.
Morning again, Commissioners. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office, seeking board action to authorize the chair to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Legacy Aviation. As of right now, Legacy is on a month-to-month contract out there as the airport's FBO. They'd like assurances that the county is committed to moving forward with them as the FBO. We don't have the MOU here to present in front of you just because of the fact it'd just be a commitment to them serving as the FBO for an additional five years. But seek authorization, seeking board action to authorize the chair to enter into a MOU with Legacy Aviation.
Any questions from Drew?
Mike? No, I have no questions. This is to, I think, finalize a lot of issues that have been lingering out there and keeps us moving forward in a positive direction, so I'll offer a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Poppins and Landine. Is there any public input? If not, I guess then we'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, I don't know, is David here or is he on the phone? As far as other information?
Morning, Commissioner. Drew DeGroot from Lincoln County State's Attorney's Office. Mr. Myers asked that this be an agenda item because he wanted to formally invite the commission to the advisory board meeting at 6:00 p.m. on July 31st. He also wanted to provide an update. As you know, the airport is currently doing reconstruction out there. I'm sure he's been called away to deal with matters. I know FAA has taken up a lot of his time, so I'm sure that's the issue for his non-attendance.
I can speak to this a little bit. David Myers had wanted to invite the board as a whole out earlier due to the fact, though, it needed to get public notice. This is a notification to the public, though, if they had a question why more than one or two commissioners may be in a single event. But there's a big investment out at that airport over the last few years and more to come. I don't know that I want to discuss currently what I think is a great opportunity that will be coming here in the very near future, but an announcement, I think, to the users at that time will shed some light on it, so, thank you. I recommend that, if you can, try to get to it. But no actions take, needs to be taken. It's just a notification.
Then I won't ask for public input. Let's move on then. Item number eight.
Morning, Commissioner. I promise I do not like getting up in front and speaking this much in front of the commission. So what is in front of you is for discussion purposes only. Looking at other larger counties throughout the state, a lot of them have adopted rules of procedure. It's just a method to ensure that the commission, the departments, and also the public is fully informed about decisions from the county's perspective, how to put things on agendas and other just routine business. And I can go through this if you want to. Article one is just about board organization. I don't think we need to go through there, through that. Rules of general conduct. And are there any questions? I know I sent this out probably back in May, and we did some revisions and then reached out to some of the commissioners, and they liked the idea of putting this on the agenda for discussion purposes. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there's any specific items. I mean, it speaks about parliamentary procedure. The board hasn't formally adopted Robert's rules, but it sets a procedure forward that those rules should be followed as close as possible. Some other just housekeeping matters. One item would be if a commissioner wishes to put something on the agenda, they'd have the support of another commissioner and confirm that with the chair. So there's just some routine rules that would put in place that you would put on yourselves. Again, this is discussion purposes only. And so if the board elects to adopt these, that's great. If not, no harm, no foul. But it's a good tool for the public. It provides key dates, just so the public knows what the commission's doing or any departments are doing within the county. But again, happy to answer any questions.
Drew, I just had a question on vacancies. You know, where it says if commissioner fails to for consecutive months, the office shall be declared vacant. Is there a provision for a medical situation which a commissioner may encounter? A medical situation which prevents them from attending or maybe even calling in because of extended rehab?
Not that I'm aware of, no. No, from a statutory provision, it's an absence of four months.
So four if they're gone?
Yes.
Okay, so this is for discussion only, right?
Correct. I'd remind you that that one is actually statutory, though.
But it's a simple four consecutive, so...
Yes, yeah, it has to be consecutive.
The part about having two commissioners to get something on the agenda, what are your thoughts on that?
That was merely adopted from other counties. I know Minnehaha County and Pennington County both have that within their rules of procedure. That's just to make sure that the board's fully informed, so then you don't have an issue where something comes up that four commissioners say, "I have no idea what this is about," or anything like that. And so that's just the thought behind it. Be happy to take it out, too, if the commission doesn't want that on there.
I like it. I think it's great to have in there.
I don't know if I do or not, I guess, but I'm willing to listen to others.
I guess I think we should try it. And I mean, if it doesn't work, it'll be pretty readily apparent. We can always amend.
Yeah, yeah. From a public comment standpoint, there's a provision in there, but it still contemplates keeping the policy as set. So it references the current public comment policy. So the board is free to amend that policy without having to amend their rules of procedure.
Any other discussion items in regard to item number eight?
Drew, you said that this was a compilation of what other large counties have had.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So from Pennington or from Brown or from Minnehaha or...
Correct.
or all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, if not, I guess we'll move on then to the next item. Mr. Anderson? Board action to approve the 2025 provisional budget for publication?
Hello, Paul Anderson, Assistant Commission Administrative Officer. This is just board action to approve the provisional budget to be published. Per the statute, the county has to publish their provisional budget between the days of July 15th and July 30th for two consecutive weeks. This just notifies the public of what we're considering. Earlier, we had set the date and time for our public hearing for the first Tuesday in September. This doesn't lock in the provisional budget. It just allows us to publish it to meet the statutory requirements. And we can still consider any changes up until our hearing and up until we finalize the budget.
Is there any questions for Paul at this time? Comments? He is asking for board action, so I will ask for public input. Good morning. Please state your name and address.
Yes, Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. My only question is, where will it be posted?
In all the legal newspapers.
In all the legal newspapers, thank you.
And online.
And online, thank you.
Any other public input? All right, seeing none, I guess we're looking for...
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to authorize the auditor to put the provisional budget in the paper, our legal papers.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Schmidt, seconded by Landine, to publish the provisional budget. Is there any discussion?
And just for the record, that goes into, what, T. Lennox in Canton and the Argus Leader?
Correct.
Because those are our official papers, aren't they?
And Harrisburg.
And Harrisburg.
They will be in all the newspapers because you guys require, or you guys have me do it in all of them?
Okay.
But then we only have three.
All right, we got them in all of them.
All right, good. Any other discussion? All right, if not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, Tracy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Humphrey, your HR Director. Wanted to bring to you all, in light of the provisional budget, a discussion and potential board action to authorize the immediate recruiting and subsequent hiring for new positions that are being considered in the 2025 provisional budget. As we have went through the budget hearings and went through department by department, I wanted to put in front of you the totality of the positions that are being requested. So as noted in the briefing form, we have six new positions that are being requested, three of which are in the State's Attorney's Office, one is in the Treasurer's Office, pending a satellite office, if you choose to do that, a deputy sheriff in the jail division, a 4-H intern, and then a building technician. So with the provisional budget, I spoke with the various department heads, especially for the time that it can take to recruit. It can be up to anywhere as short as probably four to five weeks and as long as three to six months, depending on the role. And so in speaking with the State's Attorney's Office as well as the Buildings and Maintenance or Buildings and Grounds Department, we are asking to be able to start recruiting for the deputy state's attorney position, the victim witness legal assistant, the investigator, and then the building technician. The cost of these four positions would be around $142,000 if those were filled by the middle of August, which they will not be since we haven't started recruiting for them. Typically, it will be later on in the year, so the cost would be less than that $142,000. However, in speaking with auditor, we could have the expense for those positions to be funded through our ARPA funding that has to be allocated by the end of next year.
So none of these positions will be actually starting till January 1st?
If we got the authorization to recruit for them, we would have them start prior to 2025. That's sort of, that's part of the discussion is if we can start recruiting and thus fill the positions prior to '25. To give context, sorry, the other counties, I was reviewing how other counties have handled some of their position budgeting, and that's why I brought it here to you all, to see if that was something you were interested in as well.
Are there any questions for Tracy? Is there any public input on this matter? All right, I guess she's asking for board action, so I guess I'll ask to entertain a motion.
I will move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Landine and Schmidt. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I'm curious, I'm a little concerned about moving forward with this type of an action, especially this far into the year yet. But, and at this point, I don't think there's anything that's changed my mind today. A, the positions are not approved officially. And then, again, then we're impacting this year's budget, which we're already stretching some things, so I'm not, I'm just not in favor of doing this so far, so, thank you.
I'm a little hesitant as well, for same reasons, so... Any other comments?
These are ARPA funds that need to be spent. It's already, I mean, they're allocated. So to me, this is not any skin off the county's back. We have to use these funds, and this seems as reasonable a use of those funds as any, and so that's why I'm supporting it. There is a need for these, you know, the need is already there. The need doesn't start on January 1 of 2025, so I'm going to support this request.
Any other discussion?
I'm just going to echo somewhat what Commissioner Landine said. The need is there. You have to expend these ARPA funds, and the deadline is approaching. So we have the funds available. It doesn't impact our budget. And in some cases, these are issues that look for efficiency in government. And when you look down the line of where these positions are going to be, I'm sure they'll all be, they'll have plenty of work to do. So that's why I'm in favor of it. And let's get on with efficiency and help our departments run their departments that much better.
Madam Monitor, the ARPA funding that has been designated, there's no deadline for which we have to spend that, is there?
Yes.
And what is that deadline?
We have to have it obligated by the end of 2025.
Just obligated, so is there any concern that we're not going to be able to, with our current budget structure, be able to obligate that by 2025?
Yes. Because we're using it for new positions. And one of the new positions that we were using, the highly paid one, is no longer here.
Okay. And can that ARPA fund, can that be re-designated to some other thing by a motion, by a resolution?
At this point, you can do whatever you want to with it.
So it can, if it doesn't, if it isn't used for that, it can be used for something else?
Yep, if you want to figure out what you want to use it for.
Awesome. And then, do all the department heads have a location for this individual that would get hired to habitate?
Yeah, great question. So yeah, in speaking with the State's Attorney's Office, they said that they would be able to reorganize some of their current space to facilitate those positions as well as the building technician. They both said that they can, that was one of my first questions as well, will we have enough space? And they felt that they could adequately suffice that.
How about the, given the tax position is somewhat continued of us still moving forward with a satellite office? If that didn't come to fruition, what would that position then do?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, that's not part of this request.
It says tax and licensed clerk pending satellite office?
No. You have to read the request.
There's four positions.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, my apologies if it was confusing.
I just didn't read on down through.
No, I thought the same thing when I first looked at it.
Very good questions, Commissioner Poppins. All right, any other discussion? Well, and I guess we're, we've got a motion and a second. I guess we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
No.
Poppins?
No.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
You're in the hot seat.
I hate approving this, but I guess if we're going to lose these funds if we don't use them, I'll go ahead and support it, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion carried, three to two. Drew?
Morning, Commissioner. I'd request an executive session under subsection three prior to the last board action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second? Okay, we don't need public input on this, obviously. All those in, any discussion? Okay, go ahead, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Schmidt, seconded by Landine. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
He is no liar with us.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon? Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, all right. I think we will go ahead then and take, I guess, a public comment at this particular time, so is there any opportunity for public comment? All right, I guess if there's no opportunity, that.
Just to clarify, for the regular business item number 11, that's temporary on hold right now, so you're going to be moving on to the next portion of the agenda. We may be back to item number 11 after commissioner reports and public comment.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, okay. Seeing none, then, do we have any commissioner reports?
Do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
I think we have public comment.
Yeah.
We've got.
Linda?
I'm Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota, and I received a, before I left two, 10 days ago, the rejection of my request for CVRs, ballot images, and cast vote records. So here we are again, and after a number of years, we're back at the same spot. I've been right, I've been denied the right to audit the tabulator, which is, I just don't understand it, and other people, I had an opportunity to speak to people all over the country, and also a number of my fellow South Dakota people, and when I tell them what the CVR and the ballot images and the audit logs were put, why they were put on the machine, and they were put on for ease of audit of the tabulator and instilling confidence in our election. Yet, however, South Dakota continues to deny the public the right to audit a machine that has never been audited. The post-election audit, although it was fun, it was not something that's going to audit the machine, because we were not allowed to look at voter intent. We were to think like a machine, and our account had to match the machine, which is bogus. Other auditors, or one other auditor, did not present the, what the machine did when people counted, which is the way it should be. We should be able to have a free, fair, and transparent election, and the only way to do that is hand count. We have the most important election coming up of our, of our life. We have things on the ballot that are so important. One, abortion. Two, open primaries. Three, marijuana. Four, I forgot what four is, sorry, I should have had my notes down, but the machines you're protecting, they are owned machine by a private for-profit company, and you are forcing the people of South Dakota to trust a machine that has never been audited. If you went to a bank and said, "How much is in my account?" and they said, "820," and you have 2,500 in yours, and you asked to be shown the printout that they have, and they said, "We can't do that." That is not public record. Is it really any difference of us putting ballots into a machine and saying, "No, the public cannot look at what is in that black box." CVRs, audit logs, and ballot images were put on those machines before they could be sold, for ease of audit, by you, the auditors, the State's Attorney, and by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Dave Myers at the airport, sorry I missed my agenda. I was stuck in traffic, so just a quick, I think Drew probably covered for me, but we'd like to invite, advisory board and myself would like to invite the commissioners out to the airport for a tour of the airport and just see how progressively that, the place is moving, and just kind of, I know I talk about it a lot up here, what's happening out there, but I think if you actually see it, I think it'd give you a really good perspective of what's happening out there. So it'd be July 31st, 6:00 PM, at our EA building, we'll have a light lunch, advisory board will be there, tour of the airport, some hangars, and just a little bit of discussion with the advisory board.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
I'm going to be in there.
July 31st, yes, all right. Any other public comment? All right, then, I guess commissioners, any reports?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to give you a brief update. Last week, I was at the NACO conference in Tampa, Florida, which was hotter than it was here. We had quite a delegation from South Dakota, this time we had about 15 people. Without going into any great detail, a lot of time was spent talking about artificial intelligence. I lost my pen again. How many is that now? Her drawer is full. I'll have to go to another conference and pick some more pens. Anyway, they, the big topic was artificial intelligence, and how it's going to affect county government, and to say that it's not scary would be an understatement. The speaker, I remember, got up and talked about it, and laid a piece of paper on a table like this, and he said, "This is how much we know about it," and he lifted one corner, and the long-range implications of where that can go and how it can affect government is truly something scary. So there was no other things. We talked a great deal about the farm bill, and how it affects the Midwest, and the, not about the farm bill from the standpoint of the commodity products. You talk more about food, and for, you know, that food for kids for breakfasts and lunches and things like that. Talked a lot about the farm bill and economic development for rural communities to be able to upgrade their public buildings, such as fire halls, city halls, things like that, that they're really putting a lot of money in to revitalize the rural section of your country. We talked a lot about cybersecurity, and where that is going, and how difficult the amount of hacking that's going on, and it's increasing exponentially by, I suppose our two major adversaries, that's China and the Soviet, or Russia, and how that can affect your counties, and what counties can do to protect them. I think we're very fortunate here to have a good, a great firewall. There was a brief talking about elections, not a great deal, because one of the things that NACO wants to do is to keep politics out of its situation, so you don't argue politics, because many of your things that county government does isn't political. We don't have red roads or blue roads, we don't have anything, we got public issues that we have to take care of. So it was, these conventions are, if you like conventions, they're very well done, and the only thing was, if you've ever had to travel on an airplane with the air conditioner not working, it is an uncomfortable situation. The other thing I just want to mention to you, commissioners, is this, not to belabor this, but the Center for Active Generations provides a great deal of meals for our residents in Lincoln County, and they are no longer able to sustain the amount of cost of this. So just to give you some ideas, in the city of Lenox, the congregate number of people served by meals from the Center for Active Generation is 327. They have 304 home deliveries that go around. In the city of Hudson, there are 76 congregates, and there are 127 families that are served by home delivery. In T., there's 171 home deliveries, and in Harrisburg, there was only 37, and in Biersford, which, which side of the road you're on, they have 379 congregating, 156. So there's a great number of people that are receiving Meals on Wheels, which is pretty important for those individuals, because that could be their only warm meal or meal they get a day. So this, we better look at our budget in the future, because the Center for Active Generations is going to come down and wish to have some kind of support to continue their meals. So that they didn't have anything from Canton, and I don't know if Canton is served by CAP or whatever, but Canton wasn't on their radar, so that's just an FYI. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to report?
On the note of aviation, I want everyone to be grateful that we're here and not sitting in some airport wanting to get a connecting or flight back due to a certain little hiccup this week, as I have some friends still trying to find a way home. I wanted to comment on the airport briefly. Had an opportunity, I think Commissioner Gibbon did as well, to attend a annual event of Wheels and Wings out there that the local users out there, EA and all, participate in doing a little car show. It was greatly attended. We did not see any of Schmidt's Studebakers or any of his hot rods there, but there was a lot of nice vehicles, vintage and newer things to look at. They did put on a nice little breakfast for people if they wanted to, but it was good. Several hangar operators opened up their hangars to show the public. So when we go back to one of the conditions that I thought was important for our public airport to do is provide back to the community, and I find that this is one event that they put on that is giving back to the community, allowing people to come and see and ask questions about avionics, aviation, and different aspects of an airport. So I did, I did thank them, and I want to publicly thank them, because I do think it's a service that they do provide for the public to come in and participate in, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing?
Yes.
I'd just like to make public, too, that the commissioners are putting on a appreciation picnic for the staff tomorrow in the park, which is a first of its kind, but it is some way in which commissioners personally can thank all of our individuals that work very hard every single day to deliver the services that they provide for the residents of the county. So if you see a group of people out here in the park tomorrow, you'll know what it is, the commissioners will be serving, and hopefully we'll have, we're going to have great attendance from our staff, so we hope that that can continue each and every year, so.
Thank you, yes, and I will also support the information of Mr. Poppins presented about the T. Airport. I really enjoyed that Saturday morning out there with their presentation that they really had, open hangars for people to look at their aircraft and the vehicles and so forth, so, very enjoyable morning. Task at hand, I guess we need another motion, correct, to go back into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that motion.
And I will second that, under 125, two, sub-paragraph three.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You have a motion and a second to go in exec, we'll need a vote on it.
Okay, so I'll, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens? I thought, I thought he was back, sorry.
He's done with his own, please.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried.
Second?
Motion and a second by Schmidt and Landine, is there any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to table, what number is that, sorry?
11.
11, to our next regular business meeting, with the caveat that Commissioner Landine and Commissioner Gibbon will make arrangements to visit with the city of Canton. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Poppins, second by Landine. Is there any public input? If not, oh, we have.
Good morning, Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Sometimes I just think maybe I ought to wave the white flag and say, you know, "This is not this place." I mean, I don't know if how many people have been out there and looked at that, but you got water standing everywhere. They've tried to pump that retention pond out for weeks on end now, and are gaining I think it's just something you ought to consider, maybe you made the wrong mistake, or made the mistake by buying that land, and it's not really panning out very well. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Any other public comment? If not, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, my Landine, seconded by Schmidt, any discussion, public input? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?